See red light, it doesn't sound like it.
Doesn't sound like it.
Good evening, I'd like to call this Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018 meeting of Milltown City Council's order, please stand and join me in the moment at attention, the budgets flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gang, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori.
Here.
Mr. Mahannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Mulligan.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here. All right, first item of business this evening is the city manager reports, Mr. Atkins.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, I have three items for you this evening, the longest one will be the budget, but we'll start with the airport, we have been working on several things at the airport and education hangar and a number of things that you'll see in the 2019 budget, we've also been working with Start Aviation on resolving lease issues from back in 2009, 2010, we have proceeded this entire time with the assumption, and I think I've showed you this map several times, it'll be in the budget presentation, of the skydiving moving more towards the Germantown side of the airport, opening up the hook side for industrial aviation, and as we start to get our final airport layout plan together, our final master plan together, and we start talking about the lease provisions that John and I still need to work out, we need to make some final policy decisions on how the airport's going to move forward, so we can finish those decisions, once those decisions are made of how the airport's going to go, then I need to work out with Start Aviation how we resolve those lease provisions that have not been done up to this point. So, I would like to add this to the workshop that we've been talking about putting together for homelessness, staff's working on a date, my guess is it's going to be the second November, the second Tuesday in November, we're still working on availability for both you and staff, and then we need to talk with Wolfert and Start Aviation, again, a lot of background work to be done to get ready for it, but we'd like to add this to that discussion, and if you would, go ahead, please. Wanted to give you just, I'm gonna spend literally three minutes on this, and John's here if you have any questions as well, there are two scenarios that frankly are both very viable, both possible, both can be worked, both can be worked successfully, and one of the things that we've been talking about, the skydiving facility, is John several times has said, you just don't fully understand what it is we can do at the airport, and so finally, last week, he said, get in the plane, get Dan Dickton, our new airport manager, let me fly you up to Rochelle, Illinois, and show you what could you, you could have at the Middletown Airport, so we did that last, I think it was Wednesday, flew up for there, and spent an hour, hour and a half in Rochelle, Illinois, which I'd never been to before, it's about a $2.3 million facility, is that right, John? We'll have pictures of this when we get down the road, all I can tell you is it oozes cool, I'm dead serious, it's a really cool hangar, it's got a great big 40-foot thing that becomes a canopy for sunshine and everything else, they close it, they have 50 banquets there a year on the tarmac of the, of the hangar, they've got a beautiful skydiving, almost like an extreme sports type store, you go on past that, and they've got a really cool sports bar, they've got beach volleyball leagues, they've got fire pits, the place literally, like you walk in and you go, I want a party here, it's that cool, and that's what John goes, this is what I wanted you to see, this is the style of what we could have in Middletown, and so, you know, we've talked a little bit about what, you know, fast tracks and the cool things they do all over the country, and the, the good things they bring in, to the, to the city, the tourism piece, they're doing about 50,000 jumps a year, and John can always correct me if I get the numbers wrong, but bringing people to Middletown that otherwise would not come to Middletown, this is gonna tie in with our downtown master plan, this is gonna tie in with First Friday, this is gonna tie in with the river, this is gonna tie in with the bike trail that we're gonna connect in 2020 up to Franklin, and the bike, the River Center and the bike trail will bring up to downtown, this is all part of that, come to the core of Middletown down here, and we can do all these cool things here, that's, that's one side of this, the other side of it is, and Wolfert will be here, they'll tell you that there are certain pilots, there are certain companies, there are certain things that will simply not come and bring their business to an airport where there's a skydiving operation, either for safety purposes or for scheduling purposes, there, there are pilots that simply it's like, well, I can fuel anywhere, I'll go someplace where there aren't skydivers that I don't have to mess with, I'll just pop into this other airport and fuel my plane, there are companies that would bring in aviation-related jobs, bring their planes in, have them repaired, fly them back out, that, there will be some that will not want to do it with a skydiving operation, they want to be able to come and go as they want and do their thing, and so, we have been going down a dual path this entire time from 2014 up until now, of we're keeping all our options open, keeping everything on there, we're getting to the place in the master plan where we need to have a policy decision, and especially with the lease provisions that are still outstanding between Start and the city, now, we need to have a more thorough discussion about what the airport's going to be over the next five years, so that we can, you know, understand, once we understand that, then I can go back and sit down with John, and again, if we're gonna move him to the north, there's no point in putting a lot of money in an old building if we're gonna build a new building, if we're, you know, there are things that need to be talked out so that we then know the correct way to move forward, to resolve the remaining issues that we have, but also just, you know, John didn't want to invest money if, if he's gonna move out, John didn't want to invest money if he's gonna move to a new building, all those things that we're getting to a place we're starting next year, we're gonna have to start having discussions about financing and hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes millions of dollars, that everybody has to be on the same page, so that we can move forward as a, as a group, and then John and I know how to execute from that point forward with the skydiving piece of that, so, that's all I'm gonna say tonight about it, when we get into, whenever the workshop is, we're gonna have probably a half hour of each side of, these are all the cool things that happen, again, we can do some wonderful things with tourism, downtown, all that, we can also do some cool things with aviation-related jobs, the education hangar, the avionics program, the Butler Tech drone program, there's the other side of that, and there is a middle ground, but it's gonna cause inconvenience to both, you know, you could have a thing that said, no, every time there's a plane coming in, John, you have to stop doing skydiving for an hour and let that plane come in and go back out, I'm not sure that works for him, it may not work for the aviation company, those are the types of things we want to sit down, give you both sides of the, of the coin, and then have a discussion with everybody in the room about, what do we think that airport should go, because again, we'll take that discussion, and you may not make a decision that night, but by the time we get to January, we're gonna need you to make a decision as to where we're heading, so we can finish the master plan and start moving forward and get everything resolved and, and up and running again, so we resolve these things, go ahead, please. Second part tonight is the non-public safety budget presentation for 2019, significant changes for this year, we do have a 2% cost of living raise for all employees, that's consistent across the board for our collective bargaining and our non-collective bargaining employees, as you were aware, during the recession, we had some performance-based incentive program, we're always gonna leave that in place, but there's not gonna be any money put there until, unless there's another recession, that would give us a reason to try to look at something different, but we'll leave it in place, but there's no performance incentive program for 2019, income tax revenue is projected to increase 2.5% over the 2018 budget, but actually 5% less than what we expect to have at the year end, and the reason for that mostly is construction revenue, I'll get into the details of that as we get a little further down the road, city's health, share of the health insurance costs is projected to increase 6%, we've done that in coordination with our broker, and we'll talk about our healthcare fund and where we are on that through the presentation, wanted to remind you, I, because of the way we've been and the way we've always been behind on infrastructure, behind on needs and things, as opposed to other cities that I've been in and worked on, I always try to make sure you have a 15% fund balance, but I also put every other dollar that's in, that we have in the general fund, I try to put it back on the street, so what that looks like is, you're always looking at a deficit budget, because we ended up with more money than we anticipated, I put it back on the street to get us back down to 15%, revenues theoretically, again, are gonna be very conservative, because we're not gonna put any construction revenues in the 19 budget, so it's always gonna look like we're spending more than we're doing, I do that on purpose, but I also with the caveat that if revenues don't come in, you just don't activate some of your projects, you know, you always keep it, so that you're, and you're getting a monthly update on, on the revenues and the expenses, you know where we're at, if anything starts to go sideways, you just, you just cancel a project until we get back on track again, that's always been our style, when we did this last year, we projected an end, 2018 general fund balance at the end of 20, of this year, of 4.5 million, we're sitting at 6.5 million, we're 2 million over that, almost all of it, well, not all, about half of it, is construction revenue, which again, we're not putting in the 19 budget, we're assuming there's no 19 revenue, but again, we had NTE, we had Kettering, we had the remainder of the schools, we had all those things happening this year one time, you probably won't see that again, because all those projects are now finished, and so, we've got that extra 2 million, and so again, we're gonna, every year until the recession changes or we get a little more caught up, you're gonna see the same style of budget, go ahead, please. So, what you've got now is, we will take you back down to 15.5% general fund balance at the end of 19, and again, that's projecting no construction revenue in the 2019 budget, we know Opus is under construction, we know John Westheimer's spec building and made is gonna come up and be started here soon, if we get going on the hangars at the airport for the education hangar, none of that's in here, again, we're gonna do the same style of thing, we're looking at what we have in front of us, the construction revenue is done with Kettering, but now we've got the 100-plus medical jobs at that facility, so again, we're trying to be conservative on our revenues and then very aggressive on our expenses, but stay within your comfort level, one of the things you are gonna see as we move forward, and I'll go over this two or three times, you're gonna see a decrease in the non-public safety personnel cost of $314,000, and that's because, one of the things we've done in this year, and we'll get into a little more detail, is we pulled code enforcement out of community revitalization, and we're putting it down with Andy Warwick in police administration, so now, all of the nuisance activities for the city, dog catcher, code enforcement, chronic nuisance, will all be under major work down in police, and so it's not, there's no more additional funds being spent, but it's being pulled out of this budget, and you'll see it again in two weeks, you'll see it added to the police budget, no increase, but just a shift in balances, go ahead, please. No water rate increase is forecasted for 2019, we are forecasting a 10% sewer increase, that's consistent with the long-term control plan projections that we've been giving you for several years, no solid waste increase, but we are likely to see an increase in 2020 under the terms of our contract with Rumkey, there's no stormwater fee increase for 2019, we were talking about construction revenue, we can confirm $854,000 in 2018 construction revenue, that's through August 31st, obviously, we'll have more through the end of the year, there's probably even a little bit more in there, but some of it's hard to capture, we have people doing business in two or three places, and we're not sure exactly how much does construction, how much is other things, this, we can definitely know with construction revenue from some of our large projects, housing stock, we're continuing to work on our housing policy as that comes into play, we'll talk about 19, how we can implement, what that looks like, and what we should be doing to implement that policy, and neighborhood redevelopment strategies, go ahead, please. Healthcare, as you're aware acutely, we've had problems for the last two or three years in healthcare, at the end of 2017, we made some pretty significant changes in our healthcare plan, with the idea that we could pay back the million and a half dollars that we loaned, took from the general fund in a loan, we made those changes, as of the end of 2018, we're now forecasting to be right at $775,000, our goal was to pay back half a million for three years in a row to get our loan paid back, we are on pace to do that, barring some catastrophe in October or November, we will be able to make that payment back to the general fund of $500,000, the 2019 budget, again, is forecasted with a 6% increase, we factored everything in that we know about, and again, we are forecasted to be right around 775,000, that'll give us again in 19, the opportunity to pay back the second 500, 2020 will be the third 500, that'll put our healthcare back at zero, so then again, it's gonna take a couple more years after that to build that reserve back up, but this keeps us solvent, it also pays us back in a manner that is as reasonable as we can come up with for council. Go ahead, please. General fund analysis, again excluding public safety, you're gonna see small changes, this has probably been one of the easier budgets that I've put together, because number one, we had some money, number two, there were not a lot of changes that resulted in huge swings either way, we'll talk about administrative services here in a little bit, council's up 4%, city manager up 1.8%, finance, biggest change there is when Cindy Strayer left as our part-time purchasing, we have converted that to a full-time position, with the hope that some of those contracts that we brought to you at the end and said, hey, we meant to bed this, and we just didn't get to it, our hope is that we do a better job of that going into 19 with a full-time purchasing, Public Works does some stuff, Community Revise done some stuff in purchasing, where they've done their own stuff, the idea would be to transfer that to that full-time position, so that we have consistency in how we're doing it, catching it early, you're not seeing as much on the fly as you did in the past year, information systems effectively flat, economic development up just a little bit, administrative services is its own discussion, but I'll get to that in a little bit, biggest thing with that, that 417,000, that's where that $335,000 is coming out for code enforcement and going to police, so that's not as big as it looks, it's more 60,000 to 80,000, Public Works, non-departmental, are fairly flat, you're down 256,000 overall, but you're actually moving 335, which means there's about an $80,000 difference, you're up about 80,000 over all of those funds, for a $30 million budget, it's almost flat, honestly, go ahead, please. City manager's office up 1.8%, we will continue to work on the master plan for the city, we'll continue to work to meet the sustainability goals, I've been trying to work for you since I took over for 2020, we'll continue our response to the heroin epidemic, we have money and a grant from Atrium Foundation to help pay for some of those costs, we'll continue to work on the long-term housing policy, we probably have through the end of this year to talk about the pieces of it, as we get into January, it'll be talking about selecting a neighborhood and then getting into the details of whatever, whatever neighborhood we select, and how do we apply the things we've been talking about the second half of this year in a detailed way for the 900 homes in this particular neighborhood, so that'll be where we're heading the first quarter of next year, we will be, I believe it's at the October 16th meeting, you'll have a first reading on the transportation study, we've been talking about downtown traffic calming and other things like that, we've been working with our consultant, excuse me, on the scope of work, we have that ready to go, and I think the first reading for that's on October 16th, if not, it'll be the first November reading, we have asked them to start working on downtown as one of the first things, just because of the accidents we've had down there, but it will cover transit, bicycle, pedestrian, all of those things, go ahead, please. Finance, we have spent the last year getting our new tax software with all the new changes in the tax law, up and running, working the bugs out of it, that is primarily complete, next phase is to roll out an online tax filing option for our residents, we hope to have that ready in early 19 for this, this 2018 tax year, excuse me, we are, published our first popular annual financial report in the city's history, we will continue to do that next year, we will add that to our list of awards that we apply for each year, we'll have the popular annual financial report, the distinguished budget award, and the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting award, so hopefully 20 years from now, we'll be on the 20th anniversary of our popular annual financial report along with all the others, and Jake is continuing to look at options to improve some of our delinquent account collections, both in tax, water, and other areas, go ahead, please. Information systems is fairly flat, however, they're gonna be working a lot on internal things in 2019, our telephone system is very old and antiquated, we will be upgrading that, starting in the next month or two and finishing in 2019, asset management workflow for Public Works, human resources work, police work, one of the things we've been talking about, we talked about the promenade and some of the other pavers, closing down the front drive for security, we have been working this year on putting security up in the areas where the public doesn't need to be, given all the shootings and things that have happened across the country, I, I didn't, just didn't like having the entire building accessible to anybody at any time, so areas that simply back doors into tax, back doors into health department, things that frankly the public has no reason to be, we have added now cards so that you have to card to get in, what most communities done that I've been associated with is when they get all that done, then there's gonna be a series of places, the tax department, water billing, health department, places where you, as the public, need to go every day and do your business with the city, what most communities I've seen done is now they, on their second phase, they would start limiting your ability to get in, in other words, you can get in and do your business, but you can only get so far into the health department, so if you're a bad actor doing something, you can only get so far in, and then you are stopped, and the people behind that area are safe, we will start looking at that in 2019, additional security cameras in our parks and other areas, we'll continue to work on beefing up our security, just mostly for the safety of our residents and our staff, best practices are already in place in other, in other communities, go ahead, please. Economic development is up 2.4%, one of the things I've asked Shelby to work on over the next year is, a lot of our logos, a lot of that stuff was done back when Judy was here, coming out of the recession, they're eight to 10 years old, we could use some updated stock photos of the city, we're gonna work on updated logo-type stuff, updated city signs, a lot of our stuff still has old logos on it, all those types of things, again, Shelby's working very hard, this, this PowerPoint is our new official PowerPoint, with the new brand, the new logo, the new everything, and particular fonts, everything, she works very hard to get us consistent and looking the same way, so when you see something from the city, you expect it to look a certain way, you expect it to show a certain way, Shelby working on that, there's about $30,000 put in to update a lot of those cleaner-sharper high-definition stuff, so that again, as we're putting out publications, both online and in paper, that we do our best, put our best foot forward, go ahead, please. Airport, the increase and the change on the left side, airport operations, some of that has to do with the taxiway lighting, we are working right now on the runway lighting, that's this year's project, we have been approved, and it's in your agenda for this evening, taxiway lighting for next year through ODOT, so there's our 5% match for that, we do have money in there for the education hangars, you're aware, we got 750,000 in the state capital budget to bring an education hangar online, we'll be starting the process, again, as we finish our discussions on where the airport wants to go, that'll help us design that hangar, put it out for bid, and do all those things, we already have Butler Tech in one of the hangars right now, doing some renovation work in the meantime, avionics program at Cincinnati Star, at Cincinnati State, will be firing up this fall, again, the idea is eventually, as this all comes online, that we will move people in to that hangar.
On the capital expense, just so I make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, it sounds like the big jump is the grants, am I understanding that correct, or is that general fund dollars?
My guess is we will borrow, there'll be a combination of general fund borrowing and...
So it's not the, the lighting project that we're looking at tonight, or the hangar that was awarded from the state?
The 2.4 million dollars on the right-hand side is the hangar from the state.
Okay, so that is included in that?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And again, we'll, we'll talk about what that looks like, because there's a million-dollar hangar, and there's, the first one they gave us was 7 million, but we're not gonna do the $7 million hangar, but, again, when we have these discussions about what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish, it helps us go back and tell our designers, these are the things it has to have, we've talked, we've already sat down with Butler Tech and Cincinnati State, and a little bit with the Milltown City School District, they would love, once this is up and running, to get their kids out, get them excited about aviation, and get them involved in our programs, so, again, this is some of those leading conversations, those policy decisions that then lets us go back and say, okay, Cincinnati State needs this, Butler Tech needs this, this is the money we have from the state, these are the things we want in size and rental, and to be able to rent just space to planes and things, now we'll go back and make, you know, a more informed decision, bid it out appropriately, bring it back to you and say, this is what we're thinking, this is what it's gonna cost, this is how we would finance it, make sure you're on board, but that's the style we're running. The education hangar will be moving forward, we've got the money from the state that we want to get in play, the taxiway lighting, again, assuming you approve it tonight, will be in play next year, we'll get that up and running, go ahead, please. Administrative Services, this is gonna be, this may be a one-year department, this may be future years, but with Kyle Fuchs leaving the, the city, and the, the issues we had with the demolition grant, I took Susan Cohen out of law, moved her up to take over temporarily as the director of community revitalization, as we've sat and talked about how we move forward on the short term, we are going to create for next year an administrative services department, and it's basically a mismatch of stuff, it is what's left of community revitalization, which will be less code enforcement, because that's going down to police, it will, Susan will be over the administration of what's left of community revitalization, she'll be the liaison with the community center, she'll be over the law department, HR, building inspection and building maintenance. She'll be over the law department, HR, building inspection, and building maintenance. And again, part of this was to make sure that we got the NIP demolition grant going in the correct way. She's already done a great job of pulling everything back in on that, getting more properties lined up for the demolition grant, getting all the titles, everything that we had. We had, go guessing from memory, fifteen of them that were demoed but hadn't been submitted. Those were cleaned up within about a week and a half. She has put that back together for us, and so I think for nineteen, it's going to be a, put this all together, hold it together, get everything resettled. In nineteen, we'll figure out what our long-term plan is for that department and how we put that back together long-term. Again, community development went down a whole lot because we pulled those salaries out. They go down to Andy Work and Police. Community Center's flat. Law goes down a little bit because we had Kyle and Susan. Now we just have Susan, so there's a little bit of savings there. HR goes up a little bit. Karen left us finally after forty-five years with the city. She has moved on and finally retired. This will be cased last year in HR. We are doing everything we can to get our full-time people up to speed, get all the legacy information transferred over, and so this will be the last phase of that in 2019. Building inspection and building maintenance are effectively flat. And so again, although you have a four hundred thousand dollar reduction, three hundred and thirty-five thousand of it was actually moving code enforcement down to police. Go ahead, please. Administrative services, she will be administering the, again, the land bank demolition grant. As we get things together with the new housing policy, a lot of that's going to be vacant land, title stuff. And so again, having an attorney up there that's competent moving those things around quickly and efficiently is going to be a great benefit for us. Continue the transition of HR, and again, code enforcement moving down to police. Go ahead. Public Works, small increase of up one and a half percent. We hope to, I'm going to say November, it could be December, bring you an option for getting the streetlights converted to LED finally. We think we have some ideas that finally can put together. We're, Scott and Jake are working on the financing and the execution side to make sure that our assumptions are correct, but our hope is by November, no later than December, to have an option on finally converting those streetlights over to LED. This does not reflect that. We'll make those changes as we see them. Go ahead, please. Public Works, again, we'll start work on the long-term control plan. You've seen the Sunset Park Green Infrastructure Project. We had one public meeting out for that. I think it's actually going to be a very nice improvement to Sunset Park when it's done. It's not going to make everybody happy, but it does, again, give us a chance to start on the long-term control plan. We'll continue work on sewer system assessment, hopefully to avoid some of the sewer collapses that you'll be seeing on tonight's agenda. Finalize the planning, lakeside stormwater redirection. We've been talking with, a group with Steve Hightower on a smart cities pilot program for downtown. It's got some really cool bells and whistles. Right now, it's a concept, and we're waiting to get more information, but it's something that has a lot of forward-looking ideas for downtown, access to Wi-Fi, access to downtown apps, a lot of, literally like it would, like buzz your phone as you get to the edge of the door. And there's just a lot of interesting ideas floating around. We're talking to them about that. And then a water system asset management program. Traffic electronics in parks, traffic calming measures. Again, part of that will be dictated by the transportation study and whatever we come up with downtown. Continue to transfer older streetlights to LED traffic signals. Some of our systems still have old intersections, have old control equipment. We'll update that, so our new traffic software will work with the LED to get those, again, up and modern. And it's time, if we're going to get into our neighborhoods and start working on the housing, a part of that's going to be whatever parks are in that area. It's time to have a parks master plan and talk about, you know, we have thirty parks that we don't do a whole lot with. What does that look like in the future as we move forward? Go ahead, please. Two point three million dollars in paving for 2019. You've got about one point eight million from the Ohio Public Works Commission grant. The streets are listed there. The city crew will do about three hundred and seventy-five thousand next year between the auto gas tax and some CDPG money. Those streets will be determined next spring, and you've got a hundred thousand dollars in paving for Sheldon between Kenwood and Santa Fe as part of the Sunset Park redevelopment area. Go ahead, please. Capital projects, again, I'll not spend a whole lot of time on it. You've got the North Promenade, which I brought to your attention a couple meetings ago. Each year, we're putting in seventy-five thousand for gateway enhancements. You'll see, as you get off the highway on seventy-five going towards Atrium and Kettering, we are going to start work, I think, next week to start the irrigation and things to make that gateway look like the ones on the, on the other side. We will continue next year with seventy-five thousand. We'll continue to work down one-twenty-two and up real until we look good everywhere in the city. Seventy-five thousand a year, we'll keep going. We'll start designing the University Bridge rehab design. That's going to be a huge project for 2020. I've talked to, I think, a couple of you about it. It's a two-plus million dollar. The road is probably going to have some grants, but the bridge is local, and it's probably a two-plus million dollar rehab of that bridge. It is at the end of its useful life. Scott has said we might be able to put it off one or two more years, but it's going to become a safety issue that we're going to have to shut it down if we're not going to do it. So at some point in the next year or two, we're going to write a very big check, and we're going to do less paving for that year. I'm just warning you right up front, because it's going to take all the cash we have to fix that bridge. Water fund, two million dollars in upgrades. Go ahead, please. Sewer, eight million, long-term control plan stuff, local street paving with stormwater, seven hundred and fifty thousand total. Again, part of that will be the North Promenade. Go ahead, please. Our others will be our city income tax fund up a little bit, auto and gas up a little bit. Health, there've been some changes in the higher revised code over the last year that we are implementing in 2019. One of them is they are asking for certifications of our health department. There are some pretty stringent work that has to be done to do that. We're going to bring on enough manpower to get that extra work done. Also, in the past, Jackie Phillips has been both the health commissioner and the director of nursing. The new higher revised code provisions, do not want that to be the same person, so we are contracting part-time a director of nursing to comply with that as well. That's an eight and a half percent increase in the health department. Judge Sharon will be here in a minute to talk about the municipal court. Nuisance abatement, water, sewer are fairly flat. I think that's the end. Go ahead. Yeah. That's the end of my presentation. I asked Judge Sharon to come up, and I know he wanted to talk a few minutes about the municipal court.
Evening, Judge. Good evening.
As Doug just indicated, our overall budget increase to 2019 is about one point three-four percent. All of that one point three-four percent is attributable to the COLA increase for all the employees. Municipal court was equally impacted by that as well. We've, of course, maintained a positive balance for several years. I'll attribute that to the tall man sitting behind me. We don't spend money if we, if we don't have to. Issues that we're being, we're trying to address, I'll talk about the drug issues in a minute, but the issue that's at the forefront to me is security. We need to have security screening all the time. We don't have it. There's screening in the court, a couple hours a day, three days a week. What that means is you can walk from outside into the courtroom without encountering security. That scares me, and I'm sure it concerns every one of you, and that's got to change. So that's something that I'm looking at here in the next year, and we'll be getting back next year about this time and addressing that. And the other big issue is the drug abuse issue. You know, when I came on the bench back in December, it was opioids, just, it was heroin. Well, and getting into fentanyl and carfentanil. And then it changed to sometime over the summer, it became meth, 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 methamphetamine. Well, now it's both. Now they're mixing their methamphetamine with their opioids. I did a ride-along a few weeks ago, and I saw an overdose, and it was meth and opioid, and she was out cold, dead, and they administered the Narcan, and within three seconds of administering that, she was up, standing, and talking. It's scary, but that's what we're dealing with in it. This new combination of meth with the opioids presents a whole new set of symptomology. The one thing that I was experiencing with the opioid addicts is they don't want to die. You know, a good portion of them, a good majority of them want treatment. They're just addicted, and they can't, they can't overcome that. With the meth, I, 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 it's, I think the thinking is, I'm not going to die, so leave me alone. I don't want treatment. So we're having to adapt and morph our responses to that. You know, I can't put everybody in jail forever. One of the things that we're doing, we're trying new approaches, new therapies. I mentioned briefly when I was in here a few months ago, one of the things that we're doing is I have multiple treatment agencies embedded into every docket of every court day, so, and, you know, probably sixty-five percent, that's, that's an estimate, an educated guess, I'd say sixty-five percent of the people that come in front of me, it's drug-related somehow, if not directly, and a theft charge related to drugs, or an aggravated trespass related to drugs. So anytime somebody comes into court, if they're convicted, whether, whether they're being put in jail or not, they're going to talk to and get educated by a treatment agency before they leave court. And the majority of the time, that will result in a, an appointment. When they leave court, they have an appointment for, for treatment. With the methamphetamine use, it's more difficult to maintain that, to enforce that, and, and so a lot of those abusers, I'm, I'm just locking them up. Detox, detox for an opioid user is about fourteen to twenty-one days. Well, it's about forty-five days for methamphetamine, and we don't have the jail space to, to lock people up while they detox from methamphetamine. So we're trying different approaches. One of the things that, I have some feedback, and you know, I try these different avenues of treatment, and I don't, you know, it's hard to know what's working and what's not other than I see a guy in court this week that was in court three weeks ago. I got a report from Access Counseling, which is probably, not probably, it is the biggest outpatient treatment provider in Middletown, and it's one of the agencies that is embedded into my court dockets, and they've given me a response. They referred, the court referred two hundred and fifty-three clients to them, defendants of mine, clients of theirs, to their agency through August seventeenth, and eighty-five percent of those people are either still in treatment or waiting to get in treatment, and that wait is less than thirty days, as reported to me. There's some other information, Doug, if you wouldn't mind passing that down. I only made six copies, so.
Sure.
And I think that, that's, that was encouraging to me. I would have thought it would have been more around sixty, sixty-two percent, which when we have the heroin summit, that seems to be kind of the number that is a typical, I'll call it success rate, retention rate. So I'm encouraged by that. We're working with, and again, getting back to the meth issue, trying to find ways to find out if a defendant is appropriate for inpatient. So before they're convicted of anything, or before I bind their case over to common pleas courts, we're, we're looking into a program where they, I continue it out a couple weeks, and they do an inpatient, a temporary inpatient, and then if they bail on that inpatient, they're gone, they're, they're off on their felony case. And if they work with it, then we'll consider, if it's an appropriate, if it's an otherwise appropriate charge, we'll consider reducing it to a misdemeanor. A lot of the cases that we're binding over to common pleas are coming back as misdemeanors anyway. They're dealing with the same problems that we are. They're overloaded, and they have the cram down, which is they're not, they're no longer incarcerating violent felony four and five offenders. Well, guess where those felony four and five offenders are going, they're coming back to, to my court. They're not, they're not indicting them on felonies, they're sending them, a lot of them back, so we're, we're dealing with it from both ends. But, you know, I think, I think we're having a good degree of success, and I'm happy for it. I'm proud of what the courts accomplished, the staff. I think the court and the people that we see is indicative of the population in general in that I think Middletown is turning it around. I think Middletown has already turned it around. It's happening maybe a lot slower than a lot of people want, but I think all the things that Doug's doing and, and, you know, all the agencies and, and, I'm a cheerleader, you know, and I like, I like what I see happening, and I think the court's a small piece of that, and, and I'm proud to be a piece of that piece. So we're not asking for more money to address these issues. We're going to try and cover them by shifting resources that we have. We're trying to get outside funding. I've applied for grants. We have a veterans' transportation grant. We have a veterans' court, as you probably are aware of, and providing transportation, and it goes much more in-depth. We've helped a couple veterans get their licenses back by paying off some of their suspension fees to the BMV. We have a technology grant that we'll be applying for in 2019 that will also help with security. And then finally, along with the HRT team, we applied for a grant that will hopefully provide a treatment coordinator that would be in the courtroom, so we could find agencies that could get people in right away, you know, inpatient immediately. So those are some of the things we're working on, and I hope I didn't bore you. It wasn't as exciting as Doug's presentation, but I thank you all.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm, I'm here.
Questions for Judge Sharon?
Thanks for the work you're doing. Appreciate it. Good partnership.
Mayor, I'd like to hear from Mr. Hart, if he would like to come down and tell us anything about his point of view from the airport standpoint.
Thank you, Sheriff Mr. Hart.
What point of view would you like?
You, you got the floor.
I won't lie, I was very frustrated several months ago and that there was, I would say, no communication with our organization on what was really happening at the airport. I believe that Doug has addressed that. We, we've shook hands on that. We've agreed to move forward as a, as a team that these areas had not been addressed, and they festered for nine years to the point where it became overwhelming as a businessman when all you do is give, 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 and it feels like you're having everything taken and you haven't done anything wrong. I think the transition was not a good transition with the, the airport director. I have no ill, ill toward this individual, but I thought the transition was poorly executed. As a businessman with two hundred employees, I would have done it differently. It's not my role, and I can't go back and change that, and we have addressed that. And he also, I believe, we understand that there was poor communication. Communication is everything. In this community, it's, I, I see so many great things happening. My, my son has bought a home here, my oldest son is looking to buy a home here and start to raise a family in Middletown. So it's, it's an important part of, of us, and so I have a real strong commitment to the community, because I want it to be great. If I'm going to have a grandchild that's going to be raised here, I really, I want it to be special. So the airport is, I've never gone to the airport to make money. I've gone to the airport because I enjoy it. I've gone to the airport because I, I love what we do there, and we make a difference. Our team is based there, and it does make money, it, it does well, but that's not my goal. My goal is to get along. My goal is not come here and fight with you. My goal is not to, to pick on Doug or to pick on anyone else. My goal is to coexist and to make a difference. And I think if every business acted that way, we'd have a lot of success stories in Middletown. And I believe that as a businessman, that we can be more proactive toward businesses and treating them what they really are, their economic engines. They make a difference in the community, and I think sometimes we forget that when we've got so many other problems. We've got heroin, we've got streets falling apart. We forget what's really important, and that's, it's, it's the businesses that create jobs, it's the businesses that create revenue, it's the businesses that pay taxes, it's the businesses that build your community. You can have all the people in the world that are great people, but if you don't have businesses to employ them or support them or to bring in tourism, you're going to fail. We do that. We'll bring in eighty thousand people this year to Middletown that... We'll bring in eighty thousand people this year to Middletown that wouldn't have come here. They eat at the restaurants, they buy their gas here, they stay in the hotels. They talk about it and they come back. And they wouldn't have come here if it wasn't for start skydiving. So, we bring value and, and I'm glad that I, I go home and I, I don't sit there and think, my God, I'm just so mad. I, I don't feel that way right now and I feel good about that. I, I believe we're addressing things. And are they going at the pace that I would like? Probably not, you know, coming on ten years of being here and I still don't have any of those things, but we're addressing those. The fact that Doug was willing to get in our plane and fly and see another facility that we've been wanting all along here in Middletown and, and the impact that'll have will be huge. We'll address aviation and skydiving and all those things and whatever that meeting is. I too have statistics that say otherwise and a consultant can say whatever they want, but the facts are the facts. There are no conflicts between skydiving and corporate aviation. It doesn't limit jets from coming in here because I have G5s and G4s that fly in here on a regular basis. A lot of them are clients in my other business that come here because I have a business here. And it doesn't stop them. It's all about the operation. It's all about the communication. It's about how you effectively operate your business. And if you operate it safely and your pilots are great, you're going to have success with everyone else. So, I'm thankful that Doug has waved the white flag out there and has met with us and, and agreed that there are things that need to be addressed and we're addressing them. And I will continue to be a, a good community partner and support the community. And I just hope that we, we're able to move forward and we're able to, to see the value that the organizations, not just my organization, but others that the airport bring to the community. Because I've always said, Middletown Regional Airport can be an economic engine. It should never make money. It should never be a profit center. It should bring economic impact to the community. And, and I believe it can and it is. So, that's what I have right now.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down, Mr. Hart. All right, I've got one other citizen's comment card this evening from Mr. Roger Seek. Evening. If we could get your name and address to the record, please?
My name is Roger Seek. Been a resident here since nineteen forty-seven, when I was born in Middletown Hospital. Served in the military for seventeen and a half years and medically retired. Basically, I thank Middletown for what they've done. However, I think basically I'd like to add something to the codes of Middletown for the ordinance six seventy-eight. And I've had Pauline Bobgartner and Jackie Castle as well, which are two neighbors. And we are kind of complaining about grass that grows over six inches and in the fence lines. Middletown has forgot to add the fence line where that it needs to be contained as well to keep a cultivated yard.
Okay.
So, basically it improves the appearance of the residents. It brings more money in for selling your house or purchasing whichever. Also, the fence line through the driveways, I have pictures here. I'll give this to you. You can look at them. Firewood is also stored along the fence line where that it's inside the view of passengers or visitors coming by. And it has a menace of rodents, insects, smell and small animals. I had a problem with basically raccoons. I had to shoot it in order to keep it from attacking my dog. So, basically, this is a menace for Middletown and I hope they can do something with the inspectors that goes out instead of just looking a little bit and inspecting thoroughly. Accountability is very important. And I want to thank you very much for letting me come in here and speak to you. And I hope you consider adding this or putting an addendum to six seventy-eight.
Thank you. You can leave that with the city manager and we'll look into that. Appreciate you coming down this evening, Mr. Seek.
Again, sir.
Appreciate you coming down this evening.
Well, I, I like coming in here. It's very informative. I've seen some other things I might want to add in too. However, I'd like to have an appointment with Mr. Atkins, if I could, about the sewer systems for senior citizens. Because our area is growing old. You're growing, you're having new houses, but you're leaving senior citizens with contaminated sewer systems that's contaminating the land. This is a, also a big nuisance, but I'll, I'll add that in later. It's just something right now I just wanted to add, which is not in my agenda.
Okay. Well, thanks again for coming down. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
With consideration this evening, we have the approval of the City Council minutes from September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. Chair Steven filed the Board of Health minutes from August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. And to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services contract with Williams Creek Consulting to prepare construction plans and specifications for the city building North Promenade project.
All right, do you have any, do you have motion for the approval of the issues and actions? Is the list on the consent agenda?
All moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Brings to council comments. Start with Mr. Mulligan this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no comments tonight.
Mr. Bohannon?
No comments either.
Mr. Vettori?
First Friday, Italian festival downtown. I'm like a commercial, but you know what? It's going to be a lot of fun. We're going to have Sons of Italy down there. We're going to have a spaghetti dinner and lots of activities. All the stores are going to join in. So, the weather's been great, so it's a good time to come down.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Mayor Moon?
Nothing this, this evening, Your Honor.
All right, I just have a brief comment. I want to compliment the United Missionary Baptist Church. I had the occasion to visit there on Sunday, presented proclamation recognizing their fifty-fifth anniversary and got to learn a little bit more about the history of the church. It was a merger of three Baptist parishes that came together fifty-five years ago and they've done some great work in the community. And it was a nice honor to be part of their celebration and a great, great event and great. They brought in some folks from out of state, even as far away as Florida for the celebrations. It was a good time. So, I compliment them and Reverend Tyus there for a lot of the good work they've accomplished and look forward to accomplishing. So, a lot, lots of great things and do look forward to First Friday. Lots of good Italian stuff, nothing wrong with good bony. Good Italian stuff, so I'm looking forward to that. And with that, Ms. Fox, we can move to our legislation for this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. There are ten items of legislation on the agenda this evening, three of which are emergencies and will require waiving the charter provision. This would be in regards to Resolution R. twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, Ordinance Number O. twenty eighteen dash sixty-six, and Ordinance Number O. twenty eighteen dash sixty-seven.
I move to waive the charter provision requiring readings on two separate days and to declare the previous lead read resolution. An ordinance is an emergency measure and read one time only.
Second.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
First this evening is Resolution Number R. twenty eighteen dash twenty-two. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for Project Year Thirty-three, requesting funding for improvements to various local streets throughout the city and to enter into agreements for such funding and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Atkins?
This was presented at the last meeting and this was again, part of the budget presentation tonight. This is for next year's OPWC grant.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Ordinance Number O. twenty eighteen dash sixty-six, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Hal Contractors Incorporated for the repair of the East Middletown Interceptor Sewer and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
All moved.
Second.
I had no way of previous presentation on this. Anything to add, Mr. Atkins?
We did not. This is actually new.
Oh, we didn't? I thought we did on this. Oh, your email. Yeah, this is your email. I knew I heard.
This is a forty-two inch pipe in the back of Oxford State Road that collapsed on September ninth. Hal has done several of these types of work for us before. It's a quote to replace three hundred and seventy linear feet of pipe. Three hundred and seventy thousand is the estimate. We do recommend a hundred thousand contingency. Once you pull the ground up, you don't know what, often what you're going to find. This also counts towards our consent decree with EPA and the Long-Term Control Plan and the requirements we have with that will be funded by the Sewer Capital Reserve Fund. Funds are appropriated and we are asking for emergency authorization to go ahead and get that repair completed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance Number O. twenty eighteen dash sixty-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the lowest-cost supplier for the purchase of electric generation supply by the city of Middletown beginning January first, two thousand twenty, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. City's three-year contract for electric ends in two thousand nineteen. This agreement would allow Step Lycans to act as securing agent for the city. We've spent a lot of time working with them, especially Public Works Scott's spent a lot of time. They have made several smart recommendations on how we can save money. The expected savings are fifty to seventy thousand dollars across all of these accounts. They're going to group street lighting and other things separately in ways that will save us money. We are requesting emergency legislation. Pricing is very competitive and it's trending upwards, so we would like to get started early and catch the best prices available.
Very good. Any questions from Mr. Atkins? Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yeah.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance Number O. twenty eighteen dash sixty-eight, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Phoenix Safety Outfitters for the purchase and repair of fire turnout gear. This is a first reading this evening.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. We have thirteen sets of turnout gear that have reached the end of their useful life under the fire code. We are asking to replace them. We normally would just take this through, but Phoenix Outfitters, who is our usual contractor, has us under the state, but we would waive bidding, which is why you're seeing it as legislation this evening. There are funds sufficient in the budget already to cover the cost. That legislation would just allow us to waive bidding and go with the state bid with our normal contractor.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right, thank you.
Ordinance Number O. twenty eighteen dash sixty-nine, an ordinance authorizing a third amendment to the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement between the city of Middletown and Historic Getz Tower LLC. This is a first reading.
Yes, Your Honor. As you're aware, last January, we had a major pipe burst on the fourth floor of the Getz Tower, which ran for approximately two to three days, filled the basement with water, did several hundred thousand dollars worth of plastic damage. We are still working with Steve Kuhn to get the insurance done. One of the things we have been able to do, however, is go with him to Columbus and get an extension of the historic tax credits. That's been completed and issued by the state. This would review that consistent with the state recommendations and move the completion date of the project to December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Atkins, do we know when we'll start to see much activity there or does he have a schedule?
As soon as the insurance check gets
So, what's that date based on? What's December thirty-first of nineteen based on for a completion date?
It is based on the fact that we, we know about how many months it's going to take and we're hoping within the next month or so that we can start demolition, or demolition's done, rather. Construction is about twelve months.
So, it's not like we can structure it like as a plus?
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
It's not like we could structure it as a plus? Like, for example, if the insurance thing cleared up tomorrow, it would be plus twelve months versus if it takes another three months, then plus twelve months to give him a harder date to stick to?
We went with, we went with what the state went with.
Oh, that's the state.
The state had it.
I got you. So, but if his float would go past, then we'd have to re-vote on this again?
That's correct.
Okay, but we think right now it'll be
With what we know right now, we're, we're in good shape.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Ordinance Number O. twenty eighteen dash seventy, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Branstad or Carroll Incorporated for engineering and grant administrative services for the rehabilitation of the airport taxiway lighting system. This is a first reading.
Mr. Atkins?
Talk about this a little bit. In the budget presentation, the taxiway lighting system was struck by lightning in two thousand sixteen and about thirty percent of the system has not been functional since that time. We put a reflector system in, which was adequate for the regulations, but obviously not best practices. ODOT is funding this at ninety-five percent. What we're asking you for in this ordinance is to pre-fund the engineering and grant management with Branstad or Carroll. It's for forty-five thousand dollars. Eventually, this will all be reimbursed down to our five percent of the total project, which is nineteen thousand four hundred and six. But this gets engineering done this year, so as the grant comes next year, the work's ready to go.
You have any questions for Mr. Atkins? Thank you.
Resolution Number R. twenty eighteen dash twenty-three, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. This is a first reading.
Your Honor, you're aware each year we do the budget and then you vote on it in November of each year, first and second reading, so it takes effect by the end of the year. What had happened with this contract is we put a number of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars in the two thousand eighteen budget. When November came and that contract actually was bid out and put together, we realized that the budget had already been done, but the actual cost was going to be one hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars for a difference of forty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I sent you the email earlier showing you back when we had done that back in November that we had expected to do this. We're now cleaning that number up so that we can feed people in the jail for the rest of the year.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Atkins?
Resolution Number R. twenty eighteen dash twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation, for a taxiway lighting system project at Middletown Regional Airport. This is a first reading.
Talked about this twice now. This will be number three. This is actually the ODOT permission to grant, to apply for the grant. The total cost of it is three hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three. As again, you've already approved the engineering piece, but our total match of five percent is nineteen thousand four hundred and six dollars. But this allows me to apply for next year's grant.
Okay, any other questions?
Resolution Number R. twenty eighteen dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation, United States of America, for a grant under the Federal Transit Administration Act of nineteen ninety-one, as amended. This is a first reading.
As part of the budget for community revaluation, we have the public transit, which is run by Butler County RTA. Every year you ask, you give me permission to apply for both the federal and the state grants that fund frankly, most of the public transit system. This is the federal side. The next one will be the ODOT side for the state.
Any questions from Strakens?
Lastly, we have Resolution Number R. twenty eighteen dash twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the filing of applications for current year two thousand nineteen with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants under the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program. This is a first reading.
All right, that's the state portion.
This is the state side of that same pro.
Very good. Any questions on that? All right, with that, our last item this evening is an executive session. So, I need a motion of authority of high-rise code one twenty-one point two-two G eight to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiations with other political subdivisions representing a request for economic development assistance, provided that both the following conditions apply. One, that the information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance. This will be provided or administered under any provision of chapter seven fifteen, seven twenty-five, seventeen twenty-four, seventeen twenty-eight, or sections seven oh one point oh seven, thirty-seven thirty-five point six seven to thirty-seven thirty-five point seven oh, fifty-seven oh nine point four oh to fifty-seven oh nine point four three, fifty-seven oh nine point six one to fifty-seven oh nine point six two, fifty-seven oh nine point seven three to fifty-seven oh nine point seven five, or fifty-seven oh nine point seven seven to fifty-seven oh nine point eight one of the revised code, or that involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of services involves public infrastructure improvements or extension of services that are directly related to an economic development project, or two, a unanimous quorum of the public body, and, and two, unanimous quorum of public body determines by rule call vote that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant, or for the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project. I love that one, I love that one, yes. Thank goodness for the state, thank you. Second, all right, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
All right, following our executive session, we'll be in recess until October sixteenth, five-thirty in these chambers. Thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you, Your Honor.